Welcome to the August 13, 2020, meeting of the Town of Southampton Planning Board. In accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 202.1, and until further notice, all of the Board's meetings will be held remotely via video conference. So we ask the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. Will you please join in for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. We have two public hearings this evening. We have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Certain will be meeting and holding speakers in the virtual waiting room until it's their time to give testimony before the Board. A reminder that applicant agents and members of the public speaking should state their name and address for the record. A further reminder that despite the Zoom environment, all comments should be directed to the Board and not to other participants. The link to participate in this meeting via Zoom can be found on the town's website. The meeting is also being livestreamed on the town website, on the Town Clerks Meeting Portal. If you're having difficulty accessing the meeting, please visit the Town Clerks Meeting Portal and click on the instructions link. Public comments can be made via Zoom, by email, or by uploading them to the Town Clerks Portal on the Planning Board's page. You will see on that page a button you can click to upload your comments. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated, at the end of each hearing, these applications will remain open for written comments from the applicant and the public for 30 days. These comments can also be made via email or by uploading comments on the Town Clerks Portal under the Planning Board Meeting page. Additionally, in accordance with the Governor's order, these hearings will be recorded and transcribed and made available to the public. With that said, we'll move to, oh no, roll call. Roll call, Secretary.
I'm trying to get the camera going.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Affinity.
Trying to.
Secretary is here. Board Member Burke.
Present.
Board Member Zuccarelli.
Present.
Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Blaney. Hearing nothing, he is absent. And Glorian?
I, oh, water.
We have a quorum. We're ready.
Okay. Number one is Jacqueline Cressy. Anthony?
If I may, Anthony, real quick, the Board has proper notice.
Sorry, Kathleen, I always forget that. Thank you.
That's okay.
All right, just let me get the right aerial.
Do you want to read anything into the record?
Yep, I'm gonna read into the record.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order number 202.1, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, August 13, 2020, at 6:00 PM, via video conferencing. To consider the lot line modification application entitled Jacqueline Cressy, the proposal is for a land transfer of 5,667 square feet from Lot 1, Tax Lot 27, to Lot 2, Tax Lot 23, with both properties improved with the single-family residence situated in the R40 zoning district. New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area and High Priority Quarter Quality Improvement Area, located at 61 N65 Bayview Drive, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map numbers 900-32-1-23 and 27. A transcript of said hearing will be provided at a later date, and the public will have an opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and to provide comments. The public can watch the live meeting on the Town Clerks website under the Planning Board Meeting tab or participate through the Zoom app. If any interested members of the public would like to provide comments on the public hearing, comments can be submitted to the Planning Board via mail, email, or uploaded to the Town Clerks Portal prior to the meeting, where additional and updated information on ways to view and participate will be posted. In addition, the record will remain open and the public hearing for submission of written comments. Please check the August 13, 2020, meeting agenda posted on the Town Clerks website as the hearing date approaches for further instructions on how to access the virtual meeting and for any updated information. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Heath, Secretary.
Okay. Wayne, are you representing the application?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Board Members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea Marcincigen Bruin for the applicant Jacqueline Cress. Also with us is Bruce Anderson from Suffolk Environmental. I'm gonna briefly just introduce this project, and then Bruce will take you through and describe what we're proposing here. What, as the notice indicated, we have two single and separate properties located on the northerly side of Bayview Drive, which is a private road, partially improved in some areas. The property fronts on Little Pecanic Bay. The parcel known as 65 Bayview Drive is the flag lot. As you saw on the aerial or the survey, you can see, and it has a dwelling that is existing and for all practical purposes is often in the high tide area of the Pecanic Bay. The property, and that contains 8,300 square feet, inclusive of the flag strip. Parcel known as 61 Bayview Drive fronts directly on Bayview Drive, has a dwelling on it, and that contains 14,000 square feet. What the applicant is seeking to do here is a transfer of property, and that would allow the relocation and reconstruction of the dwelling on the water. Out of the water and putting it in compliance to FEMA and other standards. This transfer of property we submitted, similar to a project this Planning Board approved in North Hampton Colony. It does predate some of the Board members. You might remember the Treadwell Trust transfer of property where there were two existing lots in the town, and the DEC identified wetlands after the Planning Board approved the subdivision, and which basically diminished practically the building envelopes. And the Planning Board reviewed and simultaneously reviewed wetland permits for the construction of dwellings on those lots because they were intrinsically dependent upon the layout and the transfer of property. In fact, the finding the Board made in that case was that they were intrinsically dependent upon the sighting of the two dwellings and sanitary septic systems, such that if the line is moved in one direction or another, it could impact the ability to develop the property in a manner that is conducive to the applicant's objectives as well as the environmental objectives. That being said, we have submitted the necessary joint wetland and subdivision pre-application, and we're here to hear any Planning Board comments, any comments of any other person interested. And I'll let Bruce take over from now and try to describe the project.
Bruce? Bruce Anderson, Suffolk Environmental Consulting, with offices Main Street in Bridgehampton. The subdivision map and site plans show a progression of erosion along the beach. And if you were to go back to just as recent as 2012, the mean-high-water line would have been seaward of the existing deck to the existing residence. That line has moved significantly landward, and it was again surveyed in 2016. At that point, it had moved about eight feet landward. And then we again updated the high-water line, which is now another probably 10 or 12 feet. So this line has moved anywhere between 17 and 23 feet. The waters, 17 to 23 feet inland from where it once was in 2012. So that now the existing house is literally over the water. So what's driving the lot line modification is to reconfigure these lots so a similarly sized house can be constructed. There is a proposal for a swimming pool and garage as well. And also, what we had to do was to lay out these plans in contemplation of what a compliant septic system would look like in terms of accounting for all space requirements. Both lots would then be upgraded with guard-septic system to feature the IA-out system. So the idea here is to enlarge the waterfront lot so that the house can be rebuilt landward of the water line and therefore increase its safety. So we're retreating from the water. And we do that by transferring 5,667 square feet from the crest, I'm sorry, from 60, 61 Bayview to the crest parcel. And so we try to provide you with all that information in one package, and that's what the proposal is.
Any questions from the Board? Good discussion? Do we have someone speaking to this application, Charles? I see someone on the screen.
I am looking now. I think we're good.
Are we sure there's no one?
I thought somebody home was coming today.
Yeah, Steven Abrams.
Yep, there was somebody.
Yes.
Please go ahead.
I see no hands. I see no hand.
Well, he was great, Charles.
Can anyone see me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
And can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
We can hear you and we can see you.
You can? Okay, very good. I am adjacent property.
State your name.
Steven Mark Abrams.
Okay.
I've been at this property since 1989.
Where? What, where do you live?
Number 67, which is right, the adjacent property.
Hold on, let me get the aerial for her.
And my question is, the whole area is surrounded by wetlands.
Excuse me, are you to the east or the west?
It would be to the west.
Okay, so the...
It's a larger piece of property with the flag going down to the beach on the curve.
Okay.
Yeah.
You see it? Okay.
I live in the neighborhood, so I walk there all the time.
All right, so you've walked by my house?
Yes, I do.
I have the gravel with the, there's a wall.
Yes.
Which I had to put up, you know, full wall, which was for my septic system, which was built in 1999, when, you know, things were different back then. And they're more severe and stricter now. My question is, looking at the overall plan for this project, I'm just wondering how something this dense could be put on that piece of property with being surrounded by wetlands? And I have a retention pond, which is considered wetlands on our property. And right up to it, there's on the plan a retaining wall, which would be built against wetland.
Okay.
It's a drain, what it is, is it's a drainage system that was put in by vector control sometime back in the late 30s, early 40s. And it was, the underground pipes were broken by some construction across the street. The property was flooded when I bought it. And through many years of working with the DEC, Department of Highway, so on and so forth, we're able to put in, dig this retention area and clear up a whole water problem in the whole neighborhood, actually, which then flows into this retention pond, then goes into a French drain, which runs underneath my property and trickles out. So what I'm getting at is that there's wetlands all around, and the density of this project looks, you know, all these two-story buildings, 11 tanks, 11 rings, well, they're not even called rings anymore, but 11 of them, two tanks, two-story buildings, a garage. It just seems very dense for a very small piece of property. I'm just looking at the overall, you know, project.
Okay, Mr. Abrams.
And how it would impact the area.
Let me just get...
I've led to a lot of high tides. Okay.
Let's hear a response.
Yeah, well, here, Jackie, it's Anthony. Let me, so regarding that, Mr. Abrams, the Planning Board has referred this to the Environment Division, Marty Shea's office. And we're awaiting their comments. My understanding is that the Conservation Board did put together comments at their meeting last night. I haven't received them yet. But my understanding, based on some emails that I received, is that there's concerns that you're raising that the Environment Division also has. The Planning Board, you know, has had some preliminary discussions and where aware of how close the structures are to the wetlands and the degree of the development. And so we're going to look at all this in the process and await the Environment Division's comments. And then we're going to see where it goes from there and, you know, any potential project changes and modifications to address any concerns that the Conservation Board has, as well as the Planning Board. So we are looking at the development. The Planning Board is looking at the development, and we're doing it in conjunction with Marty's office, who is the office that normally would issue wetlands permits. And so the Planning Board's going to, you know, utilize that office, obviously, when they're citing the development for these two lots.
Yeah, because if she does raise the ground at all with the new house on the waterfront, and I see it's a raised pool and there's steps. I don't know if that's a retaining wall. But there's a lot of flooding during the storms. And to the west of me, there's all bulkheadings. And if there's bulkheadings to the east of me, my property, any water that comes in is going to be forced into my property.
And I'll add that the, that this is also going to be reviewed by the town engineer as well.
Okay. You know, I've been here, you know, 31 years, so I understand a lot of what's happening. I mean, the low tide was like 50 feet out when I first came. And now it's, you know, basically 10 feet. So, you know, it's changed so much, you know. You know, that's the glory. Glorian? Is Glorian?
Yes, I mean, I know.
You know what's going on here.
And in the nor'easter, the end of the street is underwater. So yeah, it's almost underwater.
I mean, I'm out there digging trenches in the beach. When the, when the rockets push up and the street gets flooded, I come out with my boots and shovel, and I dig a trench in the rock to just help alleviate, let the water flow back in.
I've seen it work, then.
You know, I work, I, I'm busy working out here, you know.
But there is no global warming.
Well, we understand all that, and it's an issue.
We don't use those terms because people get angry.
Well, it's climate change.
We have more water.
Everything that melts, the seas and the bays, and everything rises. So we all have, anyone on the waterfront's dealing with it. But we have to work within the framework of the other regulations.
Okay.
Right or wrong, but we have to work within the framework of them.
Right, we do.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. Is there anyone else in the waiting room, Charles, speaking to this? Anthony, do you have a...
Asha, do you want to say something?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, hi. My name's Josh Picard. I own the property to the east of here. I've owned it since 2015, and I rented it before that for five years. Bruce actually helped me with the sale, when I did the sale. I'm in support of what Jackie wants to do. I think it would be great for our shoreline. And I have ultimate confidence that Marty Shea will make sure that this gets done properly.
Based on your experience.
Yes, exactly.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Picard.
There's one more.
Okay.
Hey, Darla.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello. Hi, this is Darla Staheky. How are you? Good evening.
We're good.
There you are, okay.
Good, good. I'm number 61 Pecanic Bay Avenue. And this home has been in my family since 1973. So I did want to point out first that the survey is actually incorrect. And where my property is, it actually lists it under Steven Abrams and Linda Tepper. So where I am is just south, across from the smaller property. That's number, the 61, where the little, more smaller cottage is right there. Some right below that, but if you look, it actually says Steven Abrams and Linda Tepper on the survey.
Are you on the other side of Bayview Drive?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, she's opposite me.
Okay.
Correct.
And the town road where it says Pecanic Bay Avenue is wrong. The angle is wrong on the survey.
Okay.
The angle of Pecanic Bay Avenue Road, it's the town road, it's, the angle's completely wrong.
So I just really, I really wanted to echo a lot of what Steven had mentioned. Having lived here since I was five years old, I have certainly seen a lot of changes here. And, and I'm sure the Board is aware that this is an area that suffers tremendously during storms. It doesn't have to be a hurricane, it doesn't have to even be a nor'easter. It is a very low-lying area, and it is under extreme flooding situations, even in the wintertime when it's snow and ice and it is piled up in front of our homes, making this whole area is not accessible. And furthermore, just the overall density, it seems like a lot, especially adding second stories to both properties and what the heights of both of those homes would end up being doesn't really seem in keeping with this area and what's currently there. So certainly very, very concerned about any retaining wall, additional floodings, the, the wetlands that are surrounding on each and every side and then some where this is located. So just taking that into, you know, if you could take that into consideration. I know you said it is being reviewed by the environmental, but definitely a concern for all of us living here.
Are you concerned that the retaining wall will funnel water toward your property?
Yes. And I'm concerned overall that, you know, the wetlands have a purpose. And by blocking them or restricting them in some way, then they fully can't do their job in maybe taking some of this water where it doesn't flood as bad. Ultimately, if we're going to all be surrounded by retaining walls, I mean, where is this water going to go? I can tell you that Hurricane Sandy, I understand it was, you know, a storm that none of us have seen before. But we have never, in living here for, you know, over 40 years, had seen water come from the backside, so from the Bayview Drive, from Shore Road, surrounded our homes. And it was up, I'm approximately 5'8", and it was past my hip in my driveway on Bayview Drive.
It was about four feet deep, water line on my carriage house.
So I can, so I can assure you, you know, this is, this is definitely a concern. And raising that and what impact it's going to have to everyone here and our properties and how, what will happen if there's a bad storm and our homes would be flooded.
So Anthony, a question. Does the provision about retaining stormwater on one's property apply in situations like this?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's always a condition of wetlands permits and general building permits when they're issued by the town. This whole area is complicated by the fact that it's inundated with wetlands, combined with, you know, the, the activities associated with the shoreline that has been altered over the years and changed. You know, makes for a very complicated situation. But yes, the, you know, you're absolutely supposed to retain your stormwater on site.
But I think there's a difference between stormwater, i.e. the rain hitting the house, and, and the surge from the bay. And the bay actually coming up through the sewer system down the end of that street and bubbling out of the sewer system when it, when that, when this storm surge.
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen it happen.
No question. And, and this is precisely, you know, what the Environment Division looks at and reviews when they're considering citing, you know, improvements on properties like this. I, you know, I, like I said, Marty's going to provide us with comments, and I can assure you that there's going to be a lot of them, and there's going to be a lot of these issues pertaining to the retaining walls and how close to the wetlands and the nature of the flooding and the density of development. All of this will be, will be addressed and discussed by the Planning Board. So, you know, plans that we're showing here, plans that were proposed by the applicant, and, and, you know, we'll see what comments come back from all the involved agencies, but we'll, we'll have this future discussions about it when we have that info.
This is a, just a pre, at the pre-application.
It is a pre-application. And unlike other lot line changes, because we know this is a complicated situation, in addition to all the wetlands and the environmental concerns, it also requires a zoning board approval. So this is not a lot line change that, that we're going to waive the final requirement. There's going to have to be a whole final application with this, and at which time, you know, we would have to consider the wetlands components as well and have hearing on it. So there would, there's going to be other opportunities to discuss it as well.
Thank you, Anthony. Bruce, did you want to say anything?
Well, only that, you know, I agree with what Anthony's saying. And, you know, when you talk about protecting the environment and when you talk about flooding and these, this is an application that's been developed to address those sorts of problems because, as I started speaking earlier, you know, if you go back years ago, not too many years ago, the existing house was completely on dry land. And so it is low. And for sure, the erosion is, is, is well... is, is, is well documented here. And the, one of the things that's driving all of this is really the septic system. So if you're going to put a septic system in that is protective of the environment, you must raise the grade in order to get the septic system to function as it's supposed to. From what I can tell you, if, if Anthony would go back to that aerial photograph of the area that might be of help. If you go to the end of Peconic Bay Avenue and you look at that house, there is a bulkhead at house. The first two properties are bulkheaded. The one on the corner there was once owned by someone named Susan Worthington. And I had, Susan Worthington had hired me some time ago after a storm, forgetting which hurricane. It might have been the Halloween storm, I'm thinking in ninety-two.
It was Bob, I think it was Bob.
Maybe it was Bob.
Yeah.
And what happened was the, the property was inundated with water. The beach left the property and it left the septic system exposed and sitting on the beach. So to address that, we had to bulkhead the property so that we could raise the grade so that we could reconstruct the septic system and suitably elevated above groundwater. Many of these properties, probably all of them that aren't treated this way have their existing septic systems sitting in water. So they're not functioning the way they're intended to function. And, and, and I believe from what I've heard tonight, that in a storm situation that the, and if the land is completely covered by water, then all that sewage is being released back into the bay untreated. So the only way I or anyone else would know how to address that would be to raise the grade so that the septic system functions properly. And so that's what's really driving this. The, and in order to do that, you have to retain the fill. These are very narrow lots. I mean, the, the, the one up on the street is fifty-seven feet wide. And the waterfront lot at its widest point is seventy-seven feet wide. So you could understand how we're constrained with respect to lot width. So we can't create septic mounds and grade them back to the property line. It, it is impossible to do that. So this plan is, and what's being shown is we start with the septic system, trying to figure out where it can go, how high the land has to be. How, how is it going to function to protect the environment? And, and that's what sort of drives these elevations, that and the flooding, which has been addressed, you know, which is, is a concern for these neighbors.
Well, that, that's what the problem is, Bruce. There's neighbors on either side of a very narrow lot that want to raise the property grade a lot. What does that do to the neighbors, to the neighbors' property and the environment of those properties?
Well, I understand that, but.
That's, that's my, that's my issue. What it's, what it's going to do to my property and also to Picard, who's just on the other side.
Right.
You have to address your comments, please, to the board.
Excuse me, to the board.
I get all that. I'm not, I, I get all that. I, I'm simply saying that if it is the environment that we're most concerned of, there's no doubt that the, the properties have, the owners of the properties have to be raised. Probably the entire neighborhood property, all properties there would have to be raised. And truthfully, if you go east, you go past Picard, I've been down there where the houses themselves are literally sitting in the water. And the only way that that can be addressed is to raise the grade. There simply is no other alternative available to anyone who wants to cite a septic system that would meet current regulations. There's simply no alternative.
Maybe it's to the board, maybe the lot is too small for such a large septic system.
Now, the septic system that's before the board and before the health department is the minimum size septic system that can be built.
Oh, I realize that.
There is no smaller septic system that can be built. And, and these, these are three-bedroom houses and, and that's the minimum size that can be built. So we started with the minimum specifications for a septic system, not the maximum. These are not big buildings. They're not, and they are the smallest septic systems that's available to the client, to the property owner.
This is just a preliminary review of the application. There'll be many more bites to the apple. And you can put your concerns in writing to the planning board. And they will be read in great detail. So with that, there, we have a thirty, Wayne, did you need to say anything or not?
No, I think we'll have an opportunity to further comment as you described, so.
Okay. So we're going to close the application with a thirty-day written comment period. So please get your comments to us in writing and anyone else here. So may I have a motion? Motion by Dennis, second by Robin, all in favor. Most extensions, seven in favor, thirty-day written comment period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number two is the BOLA EM Realty. Kathleen, do we have?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have proper notice.
Good, great. Anthony, do you want to read that into the record?
Yes. Okay, please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 202.1, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, August thirteenth, twenty twenty, at six p.m. via video conferencing to consider the site plan application entitled BOLA. The application is for the construction of a twelve-hundred-square-foot accessory convenience market for the property located in the R twenty zoning district containing a pre-existing non-conforming gas station use at two thirty-nine West Montauk Highway, Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash two-five-six dash one dash one. A transcript of said hearing will be provided at a later date and the public will have an opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and to provide comments. The public can watch, can watch the live meeting on the Town Clerk's website under the Planning Board Meeting tab or participate through the Zoom app. If any interested members of the public would like to provide comments on the public hearing, comments can be submitted to the Planning Board via mail, email, or uploaded to the Town Clerk's portal prior to the meeting where additional and updated information on ways to view and participate will be posted. In addition, the record will remain open after the public hearing for the submission of written comments. Please check the August thirteenth, twenty twenty, meeting agenda posted on the Town Clerk's website as the hearing date approaches for further instructions on how to access the virtual meeting and for any updated information. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Heath Secretary.
Thank you, Anthony. Who, and who is representing the application?
I am Madam Chair, David Altman from Brown and Altman, LLP, five thirty, Lollapalooza, Melville. I believe I should have with me also on the Zoom meeting, Chris Tartaglia from High Point Engineering. And I saw Andrew Valari from Stonefield Engineering. Andrew is our traffic consultant.
Would you like to give us an overview of the?
Sure. So I'll give you a little description of the property and then we'll touch upon some of the site zoning history. So the property, as mentioned, is two thirty-nine West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays. The tax map number is nine hundred two fifty-six, one, Lot One. We are at the southeast corner of West Montauk Highway and Terrace Drive. Lot area is thirty thousand three hundred and sixty-seven square feet with approximately a hundred and twenty-one feet of frontage on Montauk Highway and a hundred and eight feet on Terrace Drive. The site has been in existence as a gasoline service station for the better part of fifty-plus years. I will note that the zoning is R twenty and as such, it is a non-conforming use and has been permitted as a non-conforming use for the better part of these fifty-plus years. The site received a C of O initially on January fifteenth of sixty-eight. The C of O number is C as in Charlie, five, six, six, three. Approximately ten years later, on ten, six, seventy-eight, a C of O was issued number four, eight, one, four for the rebuild of that particular site. And there was a tank replacement or upgrade to the site in September of seventeen. And a C, a certificate of compliance or completion, number eight, zero, nine, four, five, one, dash, zero, zero, was issued on September twelfth of seventeen. The applicant seeks to redesign in part the site. And what I mean by that is as follows. As you can see from the site plane in front of you, there is an existing pump aisle and canopy which runs parallel to Montauk Highway. That canopy is approximately thirty-one, seven by ninety-one, eight. The applicant proposes to leave that canopy in place. It is not being replaced or rebuilt. It will be refaced, consistent with the Board of Zoning Appeals approval, which was granted this past January, as well as the, of course, recommendations from this board. There are also four multi-product fuel dispensers on the west and east side beneath the canopy, providing eight fueling positions. Those will remain as well. There is in the middle of the canopy right now, a small attendant kiosk, approximately sixty square feet. The applicant will be removing that attendant kiosk and installing in place a planter, a decorative planter to help add a little more greenery to the site and make the site look more attractive. Towards the southeast corner of the site, there is presently a small utility and bathroom structure. That's approximately three hundred and twenty-four square feet in area. The applicant will be removing that and in place instead, as you see on the site plan again in front of you, there will be a rather small convenience store proposed, approximately twelve hundred square feet. Understanding, of course, the, the general policy provisions in Southampton and what was initially proposed by the applicant. As the board may recall, the applicant sought initially a twelve, a two thousand square foot building. Having heard the comments from both the planning department and this board, the applicant reduced the size of that structure to twelve hundred square feet. And frankly, by today's standards for convenience stores, that is a very, very modest structure. There will be approximately seven hundred and fifty square feet of retail inside with the balance of the interior of the structure devoted to cooler space, bathroom space, and of course, a register for the attendant. The, there will be no onsite food preparation of any kind. It will strictly be a traditional convenience store with coffee and prepackaged goods. In addition, when we initially appeared before this board, we took into consideration some of the comments from the board in terms of its, the convenience store's initial location to the east lot line. You can see where it says Cedar Street. We initially, I think, had it set at either ten or fifteen feet. We pushed that back even further to twenty-five feet. In addition, the applicant largely maintains the vegetated buffer to the south, which exists today, where fifty feet is required. The applicant is proposing a setback of forty-four feet. And variance relief was granted by the Town Board of Appeals in its January sixteenth, twenty twenty, decision. The applicant will be landscaping the site as well, and I don't know, I hope you folks are familiar with the BOLA brand. But landscaping is a very big deal to, to BOLA. BOLA plants seasonal landscaping, meaning that in January, in winter, spring, summer, and fall, the plantings tend to be rotated out and replaced with seasonal vegetation. Always very, very attractive. The buffer to the south, as I mentioned, will be maintained. And if you take a look at an aerial photo of the site, which I think is pretty telling, there's some fairly dense, mature vegetation along that south lot line, which you can sort of see right there. And in addition, of course, there will, is a fence in place for screen, further screening, which will remain. Character area, just to give it some context. Anthony, if you could just put that aerial up again, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. So you can see to the east of us, we have Cedar Street and the Mobile Home Trailer Park. To the south immediately budding the site is a single-family dwelling. And again, as I mentioned, you already have densely, densely planted mature vegetation in place. We're not touching that and, you know, it provides a real fine natural buffer. To the west, we have Terrace Drive, which interestingly enough, proximate to the site, for the most part, is actually a divided road with that little island in, in the middle there. And then you have a single-family home due east. Last time I visited the site, I, I did notice that that single-family home, particularly along its east lot line, has a pretty tall and densely planted, I'll call it a hedgerow, with some additional, some additional mature vegetation in place, as well as a fence. To the south, on the south side of West Montauk Highway, we have the, the famous Boardy Barn to the northwest, along with, I believe, a delicatessen. And then to the northeast, we have the multi-tenanted shopping center, which includes a mix of retail and service-oriented uses. So we're not changing the pattern of development in the area, which has long since established. Getting back just briefly to the BZA's January sixteenth, twenty twenty, decision. In addition to area variance relief and signage relief, the board did grant us relief to include and as part of the application, the proposed twelve hundred square foot convenience store in the location as proposed, as well as a parking variance for one space where seventeen is required. We provide sixteen. Variance relief was granted for that as well. Curb cuts are to remain with the single curb cut on Terrace Drive being full movement curb cut, being far less heavily, far less traffic street than West Montauk Highway. And Montauk will remain as such with right in and right out only. And I believe it's going to be signed for no left turns as well. I know the board has already been provided with elevation drawings and sign drawings as well. And has had an opportunity to, I hope, look at the material samples and the color photographs previously provided. I will note that last week, I believe it was August sixth, we appeared before the Town's Architectural Review Board and received unanimous approval from them as to the design of the proposed convenience store modifications to the balance of the site. In, in fact, we actually had a little brief discussion with the ARB regarding signage. And they were gracious enough to allow me to poll the board and they were all supportive of a BOLA signed package as well. With that, we'll certainly entertain any questions the board has, either myself, Mr. Tartaglia, or Mr. Valari.
Well, thank you, Mr. Altman.
You're very welcome.
Quite familiar with the application. We've had discussions on it numerous times. So are there any questions from the board? Is there anyone in the waiting room, Charles?
Chris, do you want to speak? Chris?
Charles, is there someone in the waiting room from?
I think there's someone on screen, Chris.
Chris, you're part of the application.
Yes, I'm just here for questions. I'm the engineer for the applicant. Thank you.
Thanks.
No one else. There's no one else.
There's no one else. Thank you really for a very thorough presentation. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Happy, happy to provide it.
Close thirty days?
Yeah, we have a thirty-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Robin, all in favor. Most extensions, seven in fa, six in favor, one absent. Okay, you have, thanks so much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful night and be safe.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Motion to adjourn by Dennis, second by. My motion to adjourn by Dennis, second by Phil, all in favor?
Aye.
Extension, six in favor, one absent. Thanks, everybody. Thank you to staff.
You guys in two weeks.
Yeah, a couple of weeks.
Have a very safe weekend.
Yeah, everybody.
My name. Continue to be a maniac.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Captain. Be safe.